You are live.
Live and in color.
How come you didn't scream?
Okay, so this is the Town of Nantucket Board of Appeals meeting for May 9th, 2019. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as written? I don't think there were any amendments. Yeah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Michael made that motion. Who wants to second it? Lisa?
Sure.
Lisa seconds it. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so then the minutes of April 11th.
I did not get a chance to read those.
Alright, so Susan didn't get a chance to read it. Why don't we table those for a month? And, uh... Because I have to admit, I didn't read them either.
Well, these are the ones we just got, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they were posted last Friday.
They were.
Yeah, but they're very short. Should we just look at that? Then I apologize.
Don't worry about it.
Yeah.
We're all busy. So, okay, so we'll wait on that. So now we're on to 7611, Sations Path LLC, Sations Path 40B. Who's talking about this one? Ed?
Yep. Is this on? I can't even tell.
I think so.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, very good. For the record, everyone, I'm Asher of Asher Engineering Consultants of the Zoning Board. Well again, and I'm here to give you a construction update for the Sations Path 40B project. This is prompted by a letter, this letter that was received by Eleanor last week requesting a release of the $50,000 landscape escrow that they had submitted several months back, or a year ago from us. And we are so close, we are so close. So what I have done is, last month, the last several months, has been tracking a number of punch list items, really down to only a couple of landscaping items that I evaluated with their consultant to be a value of approximately $7,500. I was told yesterday, or shoot, I was told Tuesday, that that work had been completed, and of course I had not seen it yet, nor would I even accept it because it just got more than seeded and trees were replaced that we decided to replace because they were not doing well, or they died over the winter. And so I want to make sure that they left. So really, in a couple of months, I'll be able to conduct a final inspection of that recent work. As a result, they have requested the release of the $50,000, but I added 20% to that $7,500 number, and recommending that you can release up to $41,000, retain $9,000 for that landscaping effort that's not quote 100% completed, even though I've ensured the work's done. So every time I've been told that the work has been done, doesn't mean the trees will survive again, but we're at the time of year where that's likely to happen, obviously. So I'm optimistic that at the end of the summer, I'll be able to say, yes, we're 100% complete, release the remaining $9,000. One other item is still not complete, but is really out of their hands, but I've been tracking all along for the last year, is the takeover of the wastewater pump station by the Town of Nantucket Sewer Department. So we have negotiated that with them over months and months and months of effort. The Housing Assistance Corp., the applicant, has agreed to provide a $25,000 gift, if you will, along with all the equipment and generator and so on with the pump station. They've already assumed the operation of it, they daily, make daily visits there, so it's actually happening because obviously the site is occupied, but it hasn't been officially accepted. So a memorandum of agreement was created, reviewed by David Gray, the Director of Sewer Department, given to Town Council so that the Select Board could review and prove it, and still has not happened just yet. I'm going to reach out to the Town Manager's Office to ask if that can be along, just so we can cross that team and get that off the plate. For the most part, as my front page of my letter discusses, the roadway drainage, the water, sewer, and electric utilities, the pump station, as I mentioned, the home site, foundation soils, roof drains, and their infiltration systems, the general site grading, concrete sidewalks, on and on to as-built drawings, I've reviewed and inspected over the last several years. And I looked at my files, and I actually started working on this in 2012. This was before, started before my time, before 2012, because of various parent work cases that this was stated to, but it's been many years and several project managers that the consultants have had, and staff the consultants have had, but it's turned out to be a very successful project. It's 100% occupied, and it's looking pretty good. So really, subject to your questions and my recommendation regarding the escrow, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I gotta add a couple of quick questions. What was not done? There were some dead tree, what else wasn't? It was really only replacing trees?
There was trees, and there were some grading and some erosion areas in a couple of the bio-retention areas.
Okay.
So it was, um...
And those were...
Not a significant amount of work, but I would not accept it, especially in the area that's supposed to receive drainage, until it was properly repaired. So it took a little while to get that done.
What kind of trees were, died?
I have a list, and I must not be remiss in stating that I've also had the trouble of pleasure spending time on this document. This is the official project closeout document, copy of which is for the zoning board's records. Now Eleanor, I won't make you carry this back to the office, I'll bring it over there. This is a document that includes the narrative of the project, all the drawings, all the various documents, records that were prepared for it. Quite comprehensive, it's actually got a lot of information in here about what was done and how it was done. I think it's very helpful. So I won't be as conversant about species, if I may, but I do have a copy of the contractors, the landscape contractors invoice proposal, Chase Landscape Construction, London Plain, Black Pine, some of these, I don't know the actual common name, the genus, species name, Amalenger, Plump, Nisa, Silvatica, so, sorry, I can't help you, but...
No, I don't need to, I'm just, I'm wondering what happens if they plant these other ones that are already dead? They replant, what happens to, what happens, is there contingency plans? These next ones they plant and die?
Perhaps you didn't follow was there's a $9,000 retainer that we're keeping. They have a $50,000 escrow retainer for all the landscaping they hadn't finished yet. They're asking for all 50 to be released, and I said, no, not all 50. All the work you still got left to do, which is worth $7,500, plus 20%, $9,000, we're going to keep.
Yeah.
I'm going to recommend that you vote to keep it. And that's what would be retained until everything survives and looks like it's well-established.
Yeah, I would, for what it's worth, Kieran, I would want to incentivize them a little bit more than 20%, because if it only costs $7,500 to do, and it's 20%, I'm willing to walk away, not me personally, but maybe I'd be willing to walk away. So I would say at least two times to $15,000, if not more, to ensure that it gets done and gets done properly. I mean, because those, this was all supposed, they, the last move-in was months, and not that you're planting trees in December or January, but haven't people been in there, even in Phase 2?
Correct.
For over a year?
Yes.
Yeah, so...
I mean, did they do soil sample, see if there's...
Toxic waste? Yeah, no? So, I think at a minimum, we just have to be comfortable with the escrow amount, and then how they get to the... I mean, I guess, to Kieran's point, is there, was an unusual, did an unusual number of trees die? Or sort of like...
No, it's a fraction of the total number.
I got you.
So there are, there were a couple of areas that looked like they were getting hit with some wind. There were a couple of pine trees that, which happens occasionally. You'll plant a couple of them, and all of a sudden one will turn burnt red, right, to orange?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Just didn't survive.
Yeah.
Whatever shock it happened, happened, how it was planted. So that one got replaced, the other three next to it were fine. So one of those things that can happen. We did, we did see evidence of deer eating on some of the vegetation.
Yeah.
I mean, you almost, you name it, that's what happened, except the toxic waste part. So they have a landscape architect, the engineering firm has a landscape architect that actually is the one who looked at this with me. We walked the entire site and picked out what was not. Brian Kuchar from Horsey-Wickinburg. And we did some extensive time talking about what was surviving, what wasn't, and what was on the edge. If it was on the edge, I said, let's replace it. Because it's been a little while, it's been a season, and obviously we're beginning of the season now, and this was a month ago that I did this inspection, the 17th of April, quite a month ago, but I was, you know, wanting to make sure they did something about it now to catch the beginning of this growing season.
Ed, in large measure, did they adhere to the planting schedule in terms of the tree caliper size and whatnot?
They did, with the exception of a few tree trees in Phase 2, where they had difficulty getting the same caliper, or getting a larger caliper on island, and discussed how that they were using a slightly lesser caliper, trees that would actually grow faster, and so far that turned out to be true. For the most part, they maintained substantial compliance with the original plans.
And if they didn't, they were upfront about it and spoke to you ahead of time?
They had to ask me first. They didn't even do anything without asking me first, they were very good.
Okay. This is a total aside, but it occurred to me, we never, I don't think, came up with any sort of methodology to protect the existing sewer that go on, goes under that site? What measures were taken at the time?
Public surveying?
Yeah.
Because it's a main that goes...
Yeah, the main. Did you, like, put steel plates over it? I'm just curious.
No, it's well delineated, no construction over it. So it was well delineated and well located before any of that infrastructure was done. And now, the construction's complete, it's very safe, there's no plans in fact. I got questioned six months ago about people wanting to put a fence over these.
Yeah, I remember that.
And Eleanor and I had a discussion about it specifically, so...
We went to David Gray, and he said no. No fence, no, no.
Not really.
Extremely cautious, and we went back to the potential applicant and said, you have to do it in a different way.
Alright, again, not necessarily apropos to this request, but the roof, the houses all drain to individual infiltrators on their property, correct?
Correct, the roof drains, yes.
How long does, do those typically last before you have to...
A good 10, 15 years if they're not clogged with pine needles and anything else that might clog it, but it's not, it's rainwater, not gray water or wastewater, so it lasted definitely.
Right. It should, yeah. I mean, what is a routine maintenance program? You just clean your gutters?
So you clean the gutters, and if there's any kind of clog, there's actually cleanouts. They're built into the drain profile in the yard, the drain line in the yard, there's actually cleanouts in the yard for that purpose.
Okay.
I made sure that that was installed as well.
That landscaper was on site this week, I saw him there, working on the corner. And it was Chase from Hyannis.
Chase, correct, right.
Yeah, they had a, they had a silver nurseries truck there full of plant material. I don't know what they did, what was on it, but I did see it happening.
I mean, I have no problem with releasing some of the money, if... How does everybody feel about the incentive portion?
Maybe $5,000 more?
To just a flat $5,000, it's worth $7,500, so just add $5 to that?
I mean, that's enough money that I don't think anybody would walk away from it.
I mean, I'm good with that. I don't think 20% is adequate. What do you feel, Michael?
How long do you think you'd want to keep your eye on the plantings once they were put in?
Basically, I'm going to go back, I'm going to go out and look and see that it was done, and I'll go back in the fall.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's...
If I go back in the fall, then I know that they're going to survive, that's good. And I probably will bring an expert with me, because, I mean, if you see dead leaves and dead bark and so on, you can pretty much figure it out, but if there's something iffy, I may bring someone with me.
Yeah, I mean, if, are these, these trees like in one area?
No.
No, okay.
They're spreading.
Because, I mean, as long as the soil conditions are what they're supposed to be...
Yep. And the trees next to it, they're fine.
Yes, I mean...
So I'm guessing...
You know, $5,150 is fine with me.
I'm guessing there's a, they're probably getting some type of warranty with these trees, like a year, so...
So it's a one-year warranty, but still, I don't want to release the funds, because facing a contractor or owner for that is probably not in the town's best interest, so I wanted to at least have some insurity. But they've performed very well, they've honored their warranty, they've honored their commitments to fix things and do repair punch list items that I've given them. So I, you know, I have developed some trust with them, but I don't want them to completely walk off the job until we're 100%. And the two items that remain were to button up the pump station legality, if you will, and the landscaping.
Which, yeah, which is not a good...
And landscaping is typical at the end of a job.
Yeah, I don't see any heavy burden waiting till October to get the extra $7,500.
I agree.
No, but I, if we're going to keep an extra $7,500, or whatever we're going to keep, why don't we just let Ed make that decision, so he doesn't have to come back here?
Yeah, that's fine with me, if Ed's comfortable with that.
I'm happy to make a report, link those, and give it to Eleanor, she can send that to you guys.
Yeah, I would think. So I agree with Michael, you don't necessarily have to come back to a meeting. Can we do that somehow, Eleanor?
Yeah.
Through staff?
I'm used to that.
You know, with the chairman, chairwoman?
Yes. I mean, I think you make your motion today to do, pursue it to that, follow up.
Okay. I mean, I'm good with that, it's fine.
So it's the $7,500 plus, and you feel like it has to be plus more than 20%?
I do. I mean, if the work actually costs $7,500? And I believe them too, but they have to wait anyway. I mean, this is not the, I hope it's not the, you know, they're waiting desperately for this to make the whole project a success, or...
I understand exactly where you're coming from with the 20%. I was going to do more.
Yeah.
But I know that more than 50% of what they've done, if they told me they did it already, is going to be fine.
Well, what we could do then is...
But still, you could call it 10 grand, or 12 grand, whatever makes sense that the force comfortable with.
Or if you feel like most of it was some re-grading and whatnot that was done, and that was most of the cost, we can continue to the next meeting, and we can deal with it then. Or I, but again, I'm okay, as long as it's a little bit more than 20. I mean, five extra, $5,000 extra? It's fine.
Yeah, I can just do that, it just seems clean and easy.
Okay.
Most of the work was not ploming and seeding. It was, most of the expense was in, was in...
Was in the trees.
Correct.
So that's expensive. So I, so you want to just peg it at 12.5 and be done with it?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on. Mark, you good with that?
Sounds good.
Jim?
Yep.
So that's all you, so the motion, whoever wants to make it, would be basically to that effect, and with the notion that Ed doesn't necessarily, and the applicant doesn't necessarily have to come back here, we can rely on Ed's final report, or Eleanor can.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Michael seconds it. Any further discussion?
They're releasing $37,500.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, obviously, this is only for landscaping, I guess, sort of for public areas, right? I mean, or...
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, they're public, they're not, they're not block area landscaping. Everybody pretty much takes care of that pretty well. These are all in the bio-retention areas.
Right.
In fact, they're all in bio, everything that we're talking about is in bio-retention areas, it's public land, but publicly owned, common land.
Right. Again, not necessarily related to the motion, but is there then some ongoing maintenance plan or monitoring of the bio-retention and whatnot? Not necessarily...
There is an operation maintenance plan, and there's a landscape maintenance protocol that they prepared, and I reviewed.
Okay.
In the project closeout document.
Okay.
They did quite a thorough job. In fact, I reviewed and helped prepare part of the asphalt paving maintenance document, so that they knew when to start thinking about taking care of things before they get cracks and start to biodegrade over the 10 years, so...
Good.
They did, it was quite comprehensive.
Good.
It's really a successful project, you should all be proud of this, because you've got 40 new homes in there that are fully occupied, three Habitat for Humanity homes, two ADA homes that weren't there...
Yeah, it was a good project.
...six years ago.
And it fall, but it falls on the homeowners at this point, the asphalt maintenance, the...
It's the Homeowners Association.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Which has been created.
Okay. Alright, so Lisa made a motion, Michael seconded, no further, any further, further discussion? No?
Anyone else in the audience?
Anybody in the audience want to talk about this one?
No.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. It was unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ed. Okay, 2318, Adam Ross, Emma Ross, 50 Oak Raw Avenue, they'd like to request to continue without opening to June 13th, 2019. Eleanor, I assume they're just still working their way through the Select Board process?
Yes, we, on the Select Board, we're hoping on a 22nd of May.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay. You want to second that one?
Sure.
Michael seconds it. Any further, anybody in the audience? No. Anybody, any further discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye. Alright, I can't sit on the next one, Susan.
I'm not sitting on it either.
Wait.
Right?
No, what about...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Terry Moore, did I, did I skip one of my pages?
0319, or is it 03...
I'm sorry, my bad.
0619.
0619, 94 Orange Street. 0619.
Yeah, I'm sitting on it.
Okay. You're sitting on it too, Ed?
Wait a minute, we're, oh, I'm sorry, I totally skipped that, my bad. 619.
Steven Cohen's not here.
Victor Haley, 94 Arms.
Is this the one he just, he just did to withdraw?
I had numerous, back and forth emails with Steven Cohen's office this morning, and they were, they're reworking the project to potentially keep it all out of the setback in new construction, but they want to continue it so they can have more time to figure that out. And if they do so, they'll withdraw a portion of the application and simply keep the rescission of the old special permits as part of what they need approval for. So at this time, they just want to continue to do the review.
Here's the...
Here he is now. I'll make the motion.
Do I need to do any one hundred just yet?
Continuing Haley, that was your, yeah, okay. So Lisa made a motion to continue to June 13th, 2019.
22nd?
Michael seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
No? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, so now you're on new business.
So, this is 0319, estate of Nikki S. Tool, Edward S. Tool trustee, ECMG, MJ nominee trust, Sarah F. Alger presenting.
Good afternoon, I wrote a letter in asking to withdraw this matter with our interest. We never had gone forward and decided to...
Okay, I'll make that motion. Does anybody in the... Oh, sorry, yeah, anyone in the audience wish to speak about this one? So Lisa made the motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nope. Okay, so we'll do... 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, right?
I sat on it when it was open, so...
Okay.
It was never, we never opened it.
Never opened it, ah, then, I was at the table.
Okay, so starting with Kieran, right down this way, so, okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Kieran, no, Kieran, Michael, me...
1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Yeah, 1, 2, 3, go. Gosh, and I can't sit on the next one. Yep, so the next one is, oh, you're back, right, Ed? I was going to keep going.
Go ahead.
No, no.
Go ahead. Please.
No.
Which one's this?
Martin Law.
Oh, no, I'm not sitting on law.
Okay.
Stay away.
And Michael, you're out on this one too? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, okay, so 1, 2. So everyone at the table is voting on this one. So this is 0819, Martin T. Long trustee, Martin T. Long Revocable Trust, and Frances E. Long trustee, presenting is Glidden.
Are we ready?
We're ready.
Will the applicant mention Glidden? This is the situation, Martin T. Long bought this property in Quinnet, on Sagittar Road in 2009, and built a house. They had a plot planned out by EMAC, everything was fine, they got a CO, they're giving out, then they sold the house this year, and Art Gasparo was hired by the buyer to do a plot line just for the plan. Our plan, the note on the plan says the novice building car character, it'd be nine feet off the novel line, and 10 feet still. If you rely on the 1945 plan, it's fine. When EMAC did this plan, this bunch of Land Court plans, Quinnet uses one plan, he relied on that plan, laid the house out, they built the house, they got a CO, it's been there for 10 years. This new plan, Gasparo said, if you, if you use a different Land Court plan as a basis, then instead of being 10 foot off the line, the house is only nine feet off the line and into the setback. So it's really a pretty silly situation, but I was just hoping to get some kind of acknowledgement that everything's fine, so that when this new owner goes to sell them five years, he gets another survey of it, you know, if this issue doesn't come up, it's pretty... Again, the house, you know, they got a CO, they got a plan, the Land Court plan, everything complies. And the lady, the lady on the other, on the side of the beach roadside, across to the south, was, she ordered a letter because she thought we'd reduce the setback on that side, we're not asking for that, and if any, if there's any need to be condition, if you know, new structures are additional, you know, in this, if it is a setback violation, which I don't think it is, but if it, you know, you use that Gasparo's plan, it could be argued that it is, so... I think it's that simple.
So what would we do in this case, Eleanor, bless the nine feet?
You would validate the, you could use that section that's in the staff report, 16C, to validate the exact, you know, the as-built.
Right.
So you're basically leaning on the, you can go within the five foot in this particular zone, but it's unusual for Quinnet to have this particular kind of zone, but this is a little pocket of that type of zone, so you can do it that way. And you've done this before, where there's been an inadvertent, or some survey, sort of discrepancies between surveys over time?
Right, I just don't want Richard to have to come back because we blessed a certain number, and then the next survey comes up different.
We can keep it vague, we can keep it, if you want to do it that way, that's fine.
How would you keep it vague?
Just say, we're used to setback to five feet, as opposed to, you know, nine.
Why did EMAC use the more recent Land Court plan? Why did he use the older Land Court plan?
I don't, you know, he, those are, there's a 19, there's a 1945...
Which is what EMAC used.
Which is what EMAC used.
Yeah.
And then when I did the thing, he used the 19...
There was a...
But it's not the, it's not this plan, it's, the plan's off-site, you know, the, because Quinnet, they, you know, they go half a mile away to locate a bound, and then based on that bound, they run all these numbers, and that's how they get them.
Right, just, I'm, you, you were gonna say you have the answer to that?
Well, I, I remember when I was in title, it's Anna, correct me if I'm wrong on my timing, but there was a period of time where there were compilation plans that were being approved at the land court that some surveyors may consider a little less reliable because there are not people who's on the ground. So, and EMAC is a bit of a purist, not that art isn't a purist as well, but I mean, I'm just guessing here, but that could be one of the considerations.
So, there are two land court plans related to this property?
No, no, there's, there's one land court plan for this, for this particular.
The nineteen forty-five?
Property, but if you.
Well, what's the nineteen eighty land court plan then, that's on one fourteen?
Oh, to establish monuments, I got you.
That's the one that.
So, it's tie.
Yeah, that's what it's all about.
You know, I just, yeah, I never understand the surveyor stuff. You have monuments, I don't understand how two surveyors can walk, you know, ten feet from a monument and get a different point, but supposedly they did. I, I, it's more of a, it's more of an art, not a science. I, I don't, you know. So, ten feet to one surveyor, right, before lunch is different, ten feet to another survey after one. But, you know, we have this.
I would want to say.
We have this section in here that allows us to grab the five feet, so.
We don't need the five, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Need to go to five, I don't, I don't want to imply, I mean, you could say that you could make reference to this, you know, the fact we, uh, the setback could be reduced to
Nine feet.
Nine feet.
Yeah, that's what I, I would feel more comfortable with that.
You know, and no additional structures, you know, without coming back to you, that, there's no, there's no intention doing it there. It's, us now are there, they can't go either way. It's, you know, and there's a boundary restriction line in front because of the, because of the water. So, I mean, what's there is there, it's just.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't become a title issue, ten years from now.
And nobody, nobody objects if there's no additional building? No neighbors?
Though, yeah, there was one, the one neighbor who, but she was interested in the other setback.
Yeah.
Is there any?
We're only, we're only getting relief from the northerly setback about in the beach road.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak about this one? Eleanor, when you're saying, if we go to the nine feet.
You can do it that way, as close as.
Yeah, but we're only doing it for this corner, right? We're not, we're not blessing the whole.
No, we're blessing the as-built structure.
Okay. Does anyone have any, so, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, um, to bless nine feet on that northerly corner. I don't know how you want to word that, but, uh.
So, what were the, with no?
No further build out.
Further build out, and then?
Yeah, further relief.
And the, and do we need, do we need to include the language for your, for the neighbor about the southerly setback, setback, are the ones she was concerned about? No?
I don't think so, because she was, she's worried about the other side, she don't worry.
They're not requesting any relief on that, so that's, I think we're not.
Yeah, I think we have to.
Okay, I just thought Richard had offered that earlier, if we wanted to.
She's a crossbow.
Okay. Does anyone want to second Kieran's motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much.
Where are you going?
You have to get some other one? You're gonna, are you coming back, Michael? Should we grab Lisa and Ed or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, oh nine nineteen, Andres, or Andres Recoder and Isabel Shiafi. I'm sure I got that wrong, twenty-two Bassett Road for the applicant. Oh, Mr. Brescher.
Yes.
You've aged.
This is a, this, this is a long, this is a long, this is Thomas Scott Paul one up there.
Right.
When they went to the border, they've been to the Board of Appeals to get relief, white people bought the property, and they've been at the end of the day, there were about sixty-five hundred thirty-nine square feet of ground cover on this lot. Work, building and working and building, they're just about done, and they wanted to take away a two hundred and twenty-two square foot screened-in porch and put a eighty-nine foot addition on the other side. Means it's less ground cover. So, at the end of the day, they've got, they're going to less ground cover than what's allowed. The builder thought he could just amend the permit that's still standing to changes, and he did everything, and then he went to Marcus, and Marcus said, I don't know, it's, it's an unperforming situation with the Board of Appeals, and you're going to go to the Board of Appeals to get relief even though ultimate ground cover you're going to have is less than what was allowed by the special permit. Mr. Brescher could explain to me why, here, but but that's, that's the situation. We're, we're amending a lot of, a decision by the Board of Appeals to allow certain ground cover. The amendment is going to have less ground cover than what the decision allowed. Marcus wants a decision from you guys before he will issue, sign off, amending the existing permit.
So, what is the, uh, ground cover going to be now?
Five point oh seven percent.
Yes, it's all set and done.
And they got approved for how many?
Approved for five point one three. So, there's going to be less than what they'll do.
This is ninety-six.
Has there been a, uh, an as-built plan done?
Yeah, yes.
There's a couple here.
Bracken does a couple of them.
There's one from two thousand and two from John Chagru, one from ninety-six from Bob EMAC. Uh, which, where's the nineteen at the end? That's a Bracken one. I'm getting there.
There's a Bracken one on March of this year.
Yeah, that's all right.
What page is that, one thirty-six?
One thirty-six.
They've taken this. That's enclosed porch.
Yeah, I have that one.
None of them are porch, they haven't do well on porch. So, the empty zone isn't going to last ground cover.
So, are you asking now to reduce the ground cover that you're allowed to include this addition and take away this, this porch, the screened-in porch? With no margin? I mean, is it already built? It's already built?
It's not what it says here. I mean.
Okay, so it's all been, the numbers has been verified by PLS?
I was saying it was from Bracken.
Okay, good.
All right, Eleanor, in your staff report, just help me out here. You say the present proposal is to build a one hundred and sixty-six square foot screened-in porch and to build a ninety-one square foot bump-out addition on the north elevation for an expansion of roughly two hundred and fifty-seven square feet.
Yeah, the screened porch is shown on the as-built, uh, on Bracken's plan, proposed screened porch.
The reason we included all of the building permits for this particular building permit is because it was unclear to me. Marcus issued a violation order for work that was performed without a permit, because his feeling was that they did not exercise the original special permit in a timely manner, and it expired, they in fact came back before the board to get an extension, the then-board denied it. And Marcus was, this is why I didn't do the relief myself, because there was this whole history with this particular structure. Uh, well, Lucas. I was not really clear, I took a really deep dive in the building permit, as to what had actually been done enough. So, I'm relying upon the Bracken plan for what is proposed. My group gather recently was told that a portion of that has been done. I think in closing of the deck on the north elevation is the part that's been done. But needless to say, at the end of the day, they're asking for what's shown on the Bracken plan for their ultimate ground cover.
And, and that increase, or that number, the five point one three, that hasn't, Marcus's position was that that expired?
Yes.
It activated it though, right?
Yes.
Why did he think it, it had expired if they went to the trouble of, uh, putting the, putting it?
They changed, they amended their building permit a couple times, it wasn't entirely in sync with what I, it's, honestly, I thought it might be here to explain. I walked away from the building permit deep dive with the puddle, couldn't really tell what had happened. So, I think this will be a way to clean it all up.
So, the work's been done?
Some of the work's been done, but not the original work that was discussed in that original special, or that special permit.
Okay.
They, they changed things along the way.
But none of it went over the vi, the, the, the ground cover that we had, the board had said they allow?
But the, so the ground, the, the as-built has already been done?
Well, yeah, but it shows. Yes, the, the the plan of three twenty-seven shows the proposed addition on the back, ninety-one. And it shows this, the proposed screened-in porch. My understanding is the proposed screened-in porch was, was filled, but it's going to be
Unscreened.
Unenclosed, because of ground cover.
Right.
And that's how they're able to get this extra ninety-one on the back, because they've given up the two hundred square feet of ground cover to the screened-in porch.
What did you say, Eleanor, about them coming back for something, and the Board of Appeals denied it?
It's in your staff report, if you look at, uh, I did not remember the.
Oh, that's what I, I.
In the twenty-two facet section for the supplemental material.
That number is page six.
Well, not the.
No, this is in the back.
Oh. That's, that one's not happening.
There you go, this is gone.
Yeah, no, sir, it's actually the first thing. They came back in two thousand and six, asked for a one-year extension of the existing special permit rather than no two, and it was denied.
The extension was denied?
Correct. There's a whole exchange between Attorney Glidden, actually, and Marcus and.
Yeah, but then we got Marcus.
It's, honestly, it's confusing, I don't. Hard to know.
Oh, you want me to read it to you, Michael? The, uh, the board, the board, yeah, you do. The board could not find, it's in Eleanor's staff report. The board could not find any extraordinary circumstances which would warrant the grant of a requested relief, which was an extension of the, uh.
For one year.
For one year. And, uh, you sat on it.
Then, how is this dilapidated?
Right, this says here the applicant, we just, the board, sitting board decided the applicants have not exercised said relief within the two-year time period as prescribed in zoning by law section one thirty-nine thirty.
Yeah, there was no such. "Special permits shall expire after two years from the date of issuance if a substantial use thereof is not commenced, except for good cause, or in the case of construction, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. Such expiration dates shall be automatically extended to include time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal from action of the Special Permit Grinning Authority." And it goes on to say, "The board finds there was no such good cause that delayed construction, other than the applicant stated desire to alter the plans previously approved. In addition, no appeal to the decision was made in order to delay the expiration." So, at least in, uh, in two thousand and six, the, the, go ahead.
I'm pretty sure this is what's, it is very common to, but it was all. Is there any way we could continue for a month that I can get, I'll meet with Marcus.
Yes.
I mean, I, I'm pretty sure that the permit that we're operating under is a valid issued permit.
One twenty, one two three five oh six is the valid, is the permit, right? That you're operating under.
Yes.
As amended on one nineteen, two thousand and seven, as amended, further amended on twelve, fourteen.
So, we're looking at an older plan, yeah, a different permit.
The initial.
But it was originally issued eight four, two thousand and six, when was that zoning board?
That, that was eight, uh, twenty-two, I think.
Yeah, two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six.
That must be a different permit.
Currently, one two three, one two three five oh six.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm good with continuing, are we okay with that? All right, so.
I'm not gonna, I have to leave early next month. So, maybe we could do this the first. Well, we'd be doing it in the beginning.
We'd be doing it in the beginning anyway, so.
So, I'll be here for an hour and a half, so.
I should take care of this.
Yeah, looks like.
Names last words, okay. So, can, you want to make the motion?
Sure.
To continue to June thirteenth?
Yeah.
Second.
Kieran seconds it. You okay with that?
Yeah.
We're sitting, so, uh, the regular board members, all, any further discussion? Anybody in the audience for this one? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, ten nineteen, Rock D. Ganella trustee, North nominee trust. Seventy-three Easton Street.
Can we just have a little pause?
Yeah.
Steven pointed something out to me that may mean that this application is being drawn.
On my client.
But, so I looked, it's fifty-seven, it's your. It's not, I didn't see it on the show.
They've changed the structures.
Sorry.
No worries.
This is just relative to the deck of the shell?
Yeah.
Yeah, because the sets are allowed.
Exactly, so if there's no debt, there's no intrusion, right?
Right. Or if a platform's allowed.
So. So, it says progression of platforms that are at least two feet, not one. No, what do you, what do you think? I don't think. Fisher? Okay, sorry. It's still council destruction. Sorry, thank you for that.
Is there anybody here to represent this one? Ten nineteen? All right, so let's continue that one too.
Who, who are we waiting for?
Can we just go to the next one, maybe?
Yeah, why don't we just go to, uh.
All right, so we'll skip that for now. So, now we're on to eleven nineteen. Cynthia M. Cassano trustee, Doris Murray Trust owner, and Randall Randolph G. Sharp Jr. trustee for the Randolph G. Sharp Jr. Trust, seventy-six Pulpus Road.
Sheriff, Mr. Chairman, just as I agree to return, now, if we could skip to the, um, appeal, um, if we could withdraw that, so.
Okay. So, we're gonna skip the last one, eleven, we're gonna go to twelve, twelve nineteen, Antica Point of View LLC. I'm not gonna go through the whole litany. Uh, nine Lincoln Avenue for the applicant.
You don't have a second one?
Yeah, so I'd just like to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay.
I'm not sitting on this one right now.
All right. So, we're gonna, everybody okay with that?
Because this is ten nineteen, and that's eleven nineteen.
Twelve nineteen, uh, the applicant would like to withdraw without prejudice. Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
No. So, will someone make that motion, please?
Make the motion.
Thank you.
I just want to, just because my, my office is involved, and I don't need to bother that, right?
No. So, you're, you're recusing yourself. Okay. Just in FYI, technically, you're supposed to get up and leave. Just saying, next time, I know you're older.
Wait, are you, do you have a conference call?
I don't.
I thought I, I.
Michael and Lisa.
It's on the second one.
So, okay, so, any, who, Karen made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? No. So, we'll just go here, one, two, three, four, five. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. All right.
Do we need, Michael, do we need to get a people mover for you?
Jesus Christ, man, show me some life, somebody. I wouldn't either. I would depose you. Okay. Ten nineteen, we're just skipping. No, now we're going back to eleven. Okay? So eleven nineteen, Cynthia M. Cassano, trustee, Doris Murray Trust owner and Randolph, Randolph G. Sharp Jr., trustee of the Randolph G. Sharp Jr. Trust, seventy-six Pulpus Road for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and my report. This lot is in the log tree zone, which currently has three percent ground cover. But as you probably know, it used to have seven percent ground cover. So it has many properties that are pre-existing, not performing with that issue. This lot is about sixty-three thousand square feet, and at the time, it was originally, could have had over four thousand four hundred square feet of ground cover, but currently has just under twenty-three hundred square feet of ground cover. Uh, under the zoning bylaw of three percent, or the alternative minimum of two thousand square feet, it can have either eighteen, about eighteen hundred square feet of ground cover under the calculation, or the two thousand square foot minimum. So it's above three hundred square feet over the two thousand square foot minimum grandfather ground cover. My client is purchasing the property and would like to give away the house to someone who wants to use it for a covenant house, and would like to get permission from the zoning board under the special permit provision so that the ground cover can be maintained, the overage can be maintained. So we don't have an approved HCC design, it's not quite able to go through that fast. But my client has submitted a design that he is currently working on, that he plans to submit to the HCC, that he has, it's essentially a house that he's built in a similar lot, a similar area. So we think that something like that will get approved. So we're just looking to maintain the ground cover of a new house.
But you're not, you're proposing the ground cover should be twenty-two ninety-three or twenty-two hundred?
Uh, well, we'd like to keep the twenty-two ninety-three.
Okay, it's just your proposed conditions, plans, that's twenty-two hundred, so we should just change it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we know that it's just a, that it's just a placeholder.
Okay. Where is the, uh? I see that the ground cover is given as a percentage on the.
On the original one, it says.
On the existing, oh, there it is, I see.
Twenty-two ninety-three foundation.
Okay. This is sort of like we got away from the notion of leaving one stick of rotten lumber, which you just have to do.
We've done this a number of times.
I think it's because he's donated.
No, I mean.
We only did it, it only became a problem once when somebody didn't come in front of us before.
But I think that Ed is correct that the special permit provision was put in place because all these people were coming in with a, a renovation where they were keeping, you know, a couple of hairs.
Right.
And so the special permit was put in place to allow it to move forward.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it. Okay.
Anyone in the audience?
Anybody in the audience want to talk about this one? No?
Any letters?
No letters. Nothing. Okay. So we don't want to have some, have we ever done this before, where we take away the shed? Is it conditioned? No?
I don't think in this instance.
Okay. Then let's move on.
Have you done that, have you?
I haven't, man, we did it once.
You try to do it all the time, I know.
Not.
Unless it's in Scotts.
That's like a different.
It's just not even close to true.
They could go get a shed now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So why, why would you?
Good point.
Keep them from getting one?
Yeah. No, I think in others, I think in this situation, it doesn't matter, but I, I support you in it in other situations, for sure.
All right. All right, so let's move on, if we're all good.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit as submitted.
The relief as requested, you want to second that? Michael seconds it. Okay, the regular members, any further discussion? No. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Okay. Uh, yeah, uh, isn't there only one more? Thirteen nineteen, David J. Murphy, trustee. Two-sixty-two Pulpus, nominee trust, two-sixty-two, two Pulpus Road for the applicant.
I never got noticed on this, I don't think I'm within on the, on the list.
Yeah, it's on there. What page is it on?
I don't see you there right now.
Okay.
What's your address?
Twenty-two fifty?
If, if I am on it.
It would letter your name, right?
The, the list is definitely hedged because it's, I'm at least
You're not on it.
You're not on it.
A half a mile from that house.
Yeah, no, it's three hundred, one hundred feet.
Yeah, three hundred feet's not long, unless you're, it's not many people if you're not in town. All right, go ahead, Stephen.
So this property is popularly known as Swings Neck, you're probably familiar with it. Quite essential or iconic barn with a big portico at the front, or what do they call that, is that what that thing called?
Porte-Cachere.
Yeah. I'm not going to say it. And the property is almost sixty acres and has four dwellings, or had four dwellings on it at one point. It had a, essentially a duplex and two single-family homes. And previously had zoning relief to have the, those demolished and altered and rebuilt with four different dwellings on the property. Only three of the dwellings were then built. So the property had lots, I think, in grandfather and fourth, fourth dwellings, since it's been many, many years, much more than three years since the correction was given to that. So we're not trying to retain the fourth dwelling that was lost. However, the client would like to, would like to demolish one of the existing buildings and relocate it at a different place in the property. So we would retain three dwellings on the lot, but one of them will be demolished and relocated. At the time, previously, you weren't allowed to have three dwellings. So that itself is a pre-existing non-performing situation. Now, you are allowed to have a third dwelling, but obviously limited by the district dwelling rules, which limit the correct floor area, size of the dwelling, and also would require a year-round residency restriction or other restrictions that the client would not want to have. The area where the house is being moved to is in an area that is already developed on the lot and is already sort of within a clearing of trees and isn't really close to any of the neighbors. There was one neighbor who wrote in and asked about it, and she is more than a half a mile from the, from where the location is. So I think she had asked about, about limiting the radio noise, but that's a pretty loud radio noise that she could hear at a half mile away. I think she was more concerned with the noise that was coming from the barn structure.
She wanted to make sure it wasn't visible to her from Pulpus Road, which is not, and the radio.
So I'm happy to go through more detail, and Mark can tell me if the architect is here, but it makes sense, the issue itself is relatively small.
And, and you're here because if you were to, sort of similar to the last one, if you were to tear it down without?
If we were to tear it down, it would lose the grandfather.
Right.
So the one that's being taken down is the one in the front of the property? It's like the, it's like a, the single-story circle in front?
Yeah, if you've been there, so when you come in, you go through what we call the barn house.
Yeah, it's on the right.
And then there's, if you, when you go up, there's a large house in front, and then there's two buildings, two small buildings to the left. One of those is a non-dwelling studio, and one of them is a small cottage. So the cottage would be demolished, and then the new building would be built somewhat near where the existing tenant's property.
Yeah, that cottage is taken down. And then your site plan is showing all these other buildings?
Yeah, it showed quite a few other buildings.
So this building that you're proposing is this thing. What is all this?
Uh, that was, that's a non-dwelling gym building.
That's a gym, gym and car barn?
Gym and car barn, yeah. The property had almost sixty acres, that's kind of available.
So just no more living?
No more inhabitable space.
Right. Other than, yeah. Okay. I don't, I don't think I have an issue with it based on, um, sort of the same idea. It's got the three dwellings now, not looking for the fourth again.
I agree.
Yeah.
All right, then, is there anybody in the audience coming to speak to this one? No? Okay. So how do we feel about it? Grant the relief, has, somebody want to make a motion?
Want me to do it again?
Sure. I'm relying on you.
I'll grant the, special permit relief as requested.
Thank you.
Second.
Michael seconds it again, okay. Uh, any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye. Thank you. Uh, okay, I don't know, the regular members.
There's nobody in the audience, right? You asked.
I asked. Yeah, I don't know why everybody else is here.
We're back to Easton Street or?
Well, he's not here, so, yeah, we would have to go back, it's a good point, and we'll continue it. I think that's fair at this point. So oh nine, no, that's not it. Oh, yeah, ten, ten nineteen, Rock Gennella, trustee, North Nominee Trust, seventy-three Easton Street. So can I get a motion to continue without opening?
Sure.
Until June thirteenth?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Karen, want to second it? All right. Karen seconds it. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Why, why were, why did we have audience members? Did they, were they confused and thought we were deliberating?
No, I, I think. I think they were here for Easton.
I think people are just genuinely entertained by it.
Well, he was taking, I don't know.
How do you turn these mics off, Terry? Terry, do you know how to turn the mics off?
Is that little broad button at the bottom?
No, it's. Thank you, Captain. Obvious.
It goes back on.
All right, thank you. Anyway, can I get a motion to adjourn? Jeff? Thank you.
Mine comes right back on.
Mine does too. Okay, yeah, who seconds the adjournment motion? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.